You guys turned me off.
No, you're still on there?
We hear you.
I can hear you now.
Thank you guys, congratulations. He scratched out your name.
Okay. So continuing on with the president's. Um, just to remind you, the trustees that the September issue of the municipality and it is out, there's a lot of really good information in there, talks about the budget. The state budget that was passed and how they can help the municipalities. There's just many different ideas and stuff. I will just kind of say that we made the whole meeting on August twenty fourth. Uh, we had interim administrator Dwayne Dow present as well as Scott Harrington and Scott Heath from Vandewall, Minister's News. Um, and our attorney, like actually discussed the tip where they're standing now and what the actions are moving forward if we close it out. So a really good discussion around that. And then we also kind of discussed that mission. Last but not least. Um, the ribbon cutting for the mural was on Friday, so there was a nice ceremony, it was pretty well attended, there was uh Wood County, uh obviously. Uh, police department, Wood County and Spencer Rapids. And the now last but not least, happy birthday to. All right. Moving on to the committee reports, airport commission.
I did not have a report, they did have a meeting, but I was out of town that day. Um, the only thing I have the report is uh my next board meeting on October tenth. Uh, during separate airport driving to West Coral Rock, upstate Young, I asked him tomorrow to show the state of the uh airport report, he said he'd be blocked. So he blocked all the other purposes in the meeting.
Okay, police and fire commission chairman Stewart.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, PFC held another last meeting on nine eleven yesterday for five young. Uh, we did also recognizing a little bit of few minutes of silence and remember it took a. Two thousand plus murdered citizens, first responders. Um, during our meeting, we officially told the chief one to eligibility to hire this. Uh, that had uh been around before you started exploring today. And the other copies of those eligibility to hire this, one goes to chief one and one is going to be voted to eligibility. Um, Chief Drew notified the PFC that is of his probable intention to retire early twenty twenty five. We also, as we covered by state law, um elected officers to the PFC. Uh, it's an annual obligation, um a motion was passed essentially to keep all the current officers in the. Same position that stewardship, leading vice chair, time supervisor, etc. Uh, we also went into closed session and reviewed a firefighter application which we have received. We um in addition to that review, we received the preliminary criminal background investigation of the. On that individual from Chief Drew. Uh, the label came out of closed session and the PFC pressed a motion which rejected that. Uh, we had a brief discussion about our ongoing work of creating a online fire department application. This new application will incorporate um things that we needed legally such as the waiver signatures for background investigations. As well as medical exam releases. Um, we're, we're also informed last night by the chief that uh. There may be some legislation coming which makes a distinction between voluntary fire departments and full-time fire departments. So we're mostly waiting for the parts of that legislation and if that uh. If if we if we need to run that definition into the application. Uh, finally, with those applications, we want to make sure that we've uh. Have them filed electronically, receive them electronically. When we get to that point, first to say that I promised he's going to help us. Um, no, but with regard to, um, let me just give you an update. Violating confidentiality, but I I wanted to be transparent with you all. With regard to the fire department promotional process and paint status. Um, as you know, the PFC suspended the decision to promote. Uh, until investigation could be completed into that internal promotion recommendation process. Uh, although. PFC has additional concerns about a couple of reefer points that may not meet the required minimum of training. We think we have a plan to address that concern in the next few weeks. Um, although I'm concerned about the speed of the progress of that investigation, I understand some progress has slowed down. Um, I did, this started about a month ago, they did provide a fully extensive packet to be reviewed by that uh. Party. Um, he wanted to make sure there was no conflict of interest as he has done some work for the village before. It's a math league and some sort of this stuff, that that issue's been resolved, there is no conflict of interest. Um, I believe there has been some discussion with the village twenty with this uh new video. And additionally, we're on vacation for a period of time. I expressed some frustration with that lack of progress last week in the email and I had a telephone topic. Off the speed and I think things will move fairly quickly from here on. So I'm quickly that. A month from now, I'll be able to report some issues and we'll be able to move on. About a year from now, I anticipate the PFC beginning, beginning a several month process in search of a new police chief. Um, I anticipate filling that position sometime in early twenty twenty five. Just as a side note, I had a mentor of mine who told me once, never bring a problem to them without also bringing a potential solution. I hesitate to bring this up to you now because I don't have a solution for you, but here's my dilemma. Um, the PFC is very concerned that and what we're happening in our ability to set up a process to select the best possible police chief for the village. But we have no control over salary. Um, and our fear is that um we may not be able to attract if I have a candidate without being a little bit more competitive with that. Um, I I understand the concern about raising taxes, I I just mentioned, I was in here this morning talking to Bo Maro, there's a. Young and I am about why am I trapping these values so high? Um, I don't want my taxes to go up, but but there's got to be a minimum ground for for us to become a little more competitive with the police, with our first responders, our police and fire responders. I think um. I think you addressed that last year's budget with fire, if I remember. Um, and anyway, um, I just want you to be open to all potential avenues of revenue, the it's, you know. Explore them, don't dismiss them, and of can, be open to create a budgeting, grants, public safety consolidation, such as what Ever Spectral did. Um, I I think we got lucky grabbing Drew when we did. Um, but we're just concerned we're going to be in the established position and we aren't going to have, not have the tools to attract the candidates that the village deserves. Um, that's all I've got. Is there any questions? Do anybody have anything?
That legislation, is that state or federal?
Um, I'm trying to state, but there's a distinction between, a potential distinction between volunteer and full-time. I don't have any more information about it and I think we're all waiting for that.
Stay right.
I'm just going to get an emails saying to. Check into this and it was, there's a link.
Turning forward that link on so we might get an understanding?
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Not just going to say thank you to Chief Drew for doing the Zoom uh attendance during the PFC meeting is going on. Let's hope this, I don't have to run down here and start it and leave and then come back. So, thank you, I appreciate all of that. Okay, public works committee.
Public Works, we met on August twenty third. At four o'clock, um. Ben Martenson, Public Works Director, gave us an update on projects, um, all the projects are mostly done for the two thousand twenty-three. Year on streets, uh chip sealing projects have been completed, wall painting has been completed. Uh, crack filling will be done on Napco Lake Road yet this year, so um, because we anticipate that we'll have to chip seal that next year. Um, the summer help is all done after Labor Day weekend, so they should be. All taken care of, it was a dry summer, so we're able to do some other projects other than just cut grass. And we talked a little bit, uh, I guess next agenda, we're going to have more items on the upcoming budget course. Also, uh, we had um highway director Will and Hawk here with the Wood County Highway Department. Um, next year, uh, Wood County is planning on um resurfacing County Trump Z, which our. Our jurisdiction falls into over on the east side there, um, and what they were planning on doing is eliminating. Uh, the Gulf Coast, uh, Range Line Road and. A Street is called, they're limiting A Street and they're going to make a T intersection there, so. Uh, on the curb there, there'll be a key intersection to hopefully reduce crashes, potential crashes that have happened there in the past. Um, while they're doing this project, it's, we've talked about Range Street, about closing that road, abandoning that road. Um, we might have some financial assistance with. Wood County being there already, that they might be able to help us uh pave our portion of it for reduced cost. Just so that everybody is aware that uh Mr. Hawk is coming back in towards the end of October with prices. And will let us know for budget, and it's probably going to be right around budget October, November here. So I'm not sure anticipating what the cost would be, but he said it'd be a lot uh less expensive than if we contracted that on our own. Unless we have some issues, we've been doing their best by filling the potholes and taking care of it the best that we can. Um, also, you'll see in the uh later in the FHR, we um, we're asking to use some TIF funds for a street project for two thousand twenty-four. That desperately needs to be done here on on this side of the village. Other than that, I have nothing. Does anybody have any questions for me?
It's just a thinking matter, President. Did you guys talk at all about the condition of the credit rates and work that personally?
Yes, we did. And then there's a solution by uh. Mr. Hawk, there's there's a machine that comes and it actually just comes in and that he's going to give us a cost, he said it's not that pricey. That sounds pricey, but it comes in and it actually busts up the concrete below and they take the same, the. I guess the chips of that and grind them down and they use it as a base, as a pond, does it, does it? And then you can lay the block top right over, and they've had really good success with that, they've used it on. Point Bass Avenue in Nacusa, and they've had really good success. So we're anticipating those numbers coming up here in October, hopefully it won't be.
Should maybe?
Don't say that, hopefully it won't be that. Um. He didn't, the way uh Mr. Hawk said it, he said that we'd be surprised by how economic the.
Two thousand nine hundred, Lieutenant Traffic, Highway Commission, which I can say eleven of the buildings are official.
Definitely, please do. Use your pressure as a good kind of.
We can raise the facts.
Okay, any other questions?
Uh, when is your next?
Uh, next meeting is September twentieth, four o'clock. Like March will be your summer here.
Parks and Land Committee. Tracy said, who is interested.
Okay, we met on August twenty-third. Um, the majority of the meeting after we went over the James monthly report was the discussion about MMDM. Um, and the due management in the area, we discussed that, we had a couple of residents in, there's some major concerns. We took. Um, so with that, the discussion with the MDM, MMDM, to keep the deal of management, I will make a motion. To authorize a participation in the twenty twenty-three MMDM.
She makes her second proposal for a discussion.
So this is.
Any discussion in on favor? Anybody opposed?
Um, we have, we we talked about uh legacy dinner in the power on that, that the job. Um, and then we start to. We talked about that, um, so meeting was joined at four forty-one and I did not set a landing to allow to get down to.
I like to be uh.
Twenty-seven?
It's a good.
Okay, well, thank you.
We met Tuesday, second to fifth. Um, we have several motions, the first one is a motion to list the east part of two forty-one. Which will be two thirty-one Market Avenue at a price of twenty-four thousand dollars.
Motion by Grundon, in a second.
So is that? Is that the piece next to? So that whole thing, you must put that?
Small section.
In understanding, then you have an opportunity or you called it off already?
That we have to discuss, both section. So this is just for the rest of. And more questions?
This means for twenty-four thousand, we're going to put it up with a realtor or we're just going to keep it in-house, this is like twenty-four thousand? There's an offer or a realtor?
We have an offer that we'll be discussing, so we wouldn't put that one with the realtor.
Any other discussion, questions?
Just just a quick question. So the motion is for twenty-four thousand, but can we go into closed session to talk about?
To talk about an offer?
Oh, okay.
So that's right. So this is. What? That's what the motion is for, that one. So we have to, we have to have a listing price because we don't have that yet, and then the procession is about the offer that has come in. To make a decision, yes or no? Does that help?
Sure, it's just a list price, it's not a.
Right. Okay, um, motion by Grundon, second by Moore, all in favor? Anybody opposed?
So then I make a motion to go into closed session. For the statute nineteen point eighty-five, for N one, for N E, to discuss the offer that we have received.
So motion by Grundon. For a second? Second, second by Moore, all in favor to go to closed session?
Alright.
Anybody opposed? How long do you think it'll be in a closed session?
Hopefully not long.
Five to ten minutes.
Yeah, we're just going to go in a closed session for a little bit.
I'll make the motion to accept the offer for fifteen thousand. With the addition of the village has the right to purchase if he ever wants to sell it, first right.
I will second on your group, the group being for right of first or two?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so Grundon made the motion, zerka made the second, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That one carries, so.
Okay, all right, so. We also have a motion to list the remaining west part of two forty, two forty-one Market Avenue at thirty-five thousand. And I'll make that motion.
Motion by Grundon.
I'll second that.
Second by McGregor.
So the state of that unit is in significant disrepair mold. Um, the windows at any moment, according to Ben, could fall right in, which. Do you remember that price he said for the replacement? I thought he said like a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
We can see if somebody will offer.
Yeah, so at this point, the motion that we came up with is thirty-five thousand dollars.
Any questions or further discuss some discussion on the motion?
Eric.
Is that listing to a realtor or that just?
We had not locked in with the realtor.
Or is that what the plan is going to be to market?
I think the plan was that Tranel was going to take it, but we haven't devote, you know, further pursued that.
Who's he with?
Himself.
Premier Realty Group?
Anything else?
No. Okay, um, Grundon with motion, McGregor with the second to list the west part of two forty-one Market Avenue at thirty-five thousand dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, who carries?
Okay.
All right, we have a motion to accept the proposed pool filling policy, I'll make that motion.
A motion by Grundon, second by Moore, discussion.
What is, what is their price that they recharge or?
It was included. Yeah, he really did a good job and when I read through it, it's pretty, makes complete sense.
Well, if you have a swimming pool.
Where is it again?
You have a swimming pool, you can pay to have it filled.
And you'll need water.
And now we have a document saying what that cost would be.
You're going to have the money?
If you have a swimming pool, you can pay to have it filled, but before it was just kind of a flat cost and the flat cost didn't make a lot of sense. Because maybe you have a kiddie pool and maybe you have a gigantic pool, so um Ben Martenson worked, I think, with chief to kind of put together a formula for what the cost would be.
Okay.
Very good.
Any other questions on it?
How many pools were filled this summer, did we fill any?
I don't mind. But I don't know.
Well, you guys filled the pool.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, that's the only one I know.
Any other questions, anybody? Any other questions, anybody?
Okay, um, Grandin motion, Moore second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That one carries.
All right, I have a motion to approve the certified survey map for property owned by Charles Lester.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Radke.
I'll second.
Second, McGregor, discussion.
So this property, the map's included, but it's just sectioning off a small piece of property that is between um, Lester's and Scott Stewart. Um, it does have a variance for the shared driveway. That's basically the only uniqueness of it. Any questions?
I guess I don't understand what you're trying to do.
They're trying to just separate off a piece of their property.
Lester's are trying to whack off a piece and sell it to?
They're just separating again, that's it.
You're doing that? You're doing?
Anything else? Got a motion by Radke, second by McGregor, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
The last motion, I'll make the motion to provide a directive to our administrator to con- contact Pablaski Development. To request fulfillment of item number eight in the development agreement. Number eight is the improvement dedications to the village, and that would include the um. The shed that we've talked about for several years now, that could be potentially used for fire department equipment. And the property designated for yard waste.
There's large one.
Yard waste. So, so since that development agreement is approaching the end, we need to start having that discussion.
So we need a motion.
I've made the motion.
I've made the motion, okay.
So what is the?
Hold on, I need a second.
Oh.
I'll second it just for the discussion purpose.
So what is the, the, the agreement say that they need to put up a, a building on a piece of property, does the village take that over or is that?
And you know what the building was line?
What, what?
Bullshit. With a gravel base.
If I'm not mistaken, the property is already deeded to us, right there.
Correct.
So the, the discussions about making them, or not making them, but asking them for the building of some sort?
Well, it's to ask Dwayne to basically get them to fulfill the development agreement completely. Where we already have it deeded to us, but no more work has been done, and there is not a designated yard waste site.
So the question I have is the, the motion is just to have Dwayne have that conversation?
Direct him to get going on it.
We have to have a motion for that?
He asked for it, to be documented, yes.
Dwayne, do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, what I'm adding, as I realize there's two items in your agreement that has not been fulfilled, all I'm trying to do is make sure that you're.
You cut out.
Paul Mix McCallum.
Oh my gosh.
Oh, that was terrible.
I.
It was, it was terrible.
Can you refresh it?
Not sure it's on our end.
You call him or I'll call him.
Here's go.
I got it.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic voice message system.
So I think he's going to pop back in anyway, but I think he covered his.
It's more or less just making sure that.
Yeah, I'm not sure, do we need to, I guess.
We don't necessarily need it, but it's to document the process that we asked him to do that, especially when he's only working two days a week, and that could be a time intensive.
Well, and we just want to make sure he gets taken care of before and not forgotten about.
Yeah, hold on, I'll put you on speaker, Woody.
Somebody show him how to do that. Like how he answered his.
Still there?
Yeah, I'm still there.
Okay, I've got new hearing aid, so don't swear about assumption graduates, but I'll hear you.
Oh, oh, okay.
All right, we've got Dwayne, did you have something else?
No, that was it, it was just, I, I finished my conversation, I got to connect with you again.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You bet, this, I'll stay on here until I connect.
Okay.
Okay, until Zerfle's battery dies.
Is hearing aid?
Just, uh, you don't want me to tell war stories about the Newman Assumption game back in six.
Motion by Grandin, second by Zerfle, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, that one carries.
All right, and that's it for Pitt.
Okay, when is your next meeting?
Our next meeting is. October third at five o'clock. Okay, thank you. Moving on to public safety.
Okay, uh, Public Safety had their regularly scheduled meeting Wednesday, September sixth. Um, our meeting focused on budgets, but we did get some updates from both departments. Uh, from the police department, um, there had been a guardian grant out there, um, available with help with SROs, but that's, um. There's been no movement on that, but, uh, Chief True is looking at that possibility, that was, the guardian grant was for the SRO program, uh, a federal grant. Um, then also a legacy grant, and those go to provide such items as flock cameras, and we are looking into. Uh, these cameras which could be placed, um, around the village to help track, uh, license plates as they come through, um, and be hooked up to the. License plate registry, um, in case there's a, um, I'm not using official words here, but you get what I mean. Um, in case there is a, a marked vehicle that we need to track. Uh, the new squad is still waiting for a radio, but the radio, uh, from our current provider has been, it's just on a, uh. undefined delay, so we're looking at a new vendor to see if a radio could be shipped sooner with them. Um, and until then, the new squad is not, uh. Ready to be put into use. As far as a, a preliminary budget, um, we looked at the budget this month, and we'll hope to finalize the budgets for next month. Um, uh, there are some, I won't go into a lot of detail, just, uh, what has been put on the table. Uh, some increases in, in certain areas, but a significant increase with salary, uh, with the, um. Anticipated fourth officer slash SRO at seventy-six thousand, or almost just under seventy-seven thousand. Um, with some wage increases as well, a total that increases the, the budget for wages to a hundred thou- upwards to a hundred thousand dollars. To a total of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and, uh, that's pretty much the changes that has been presented with us, and a lot of the added expenses is also in anticipation of a new police. Uh, chief, as Scott Stewart has already talked about, uh, and anticipating the training and the process, uh, uniforms that go into that. So, um, just throwing it out there, we talked about, it's already been brought up, uh, what a competitive wage looks like, um. Scott, uh, Chief Drew is suggesting a three percent increase to eighty-one thousand, so we'll see how that. Uh, is competitive, and, uh, I know that he presented us with also the wages of surrounding villages as well to compare to, so. I think, yeah, we're, we have those numbers in front of us, and to consider for our next meeting, to see how competitive, competitive those numbers are. Um. Uh, let's see here, so that was police. For fire, uh, we, we did see the, the hiring of the two new, uh, firefighters that just happened today. Some minor repairs on the engines, all are well with them. Um. Uh, the budget presented is, uh, pretty much the same from last year with no significant changes to the fire department budget. But we are looking at creating a four hundred account, uh, in a, uh, in order to be able to roll over funds for, uh, their vehicles, because they do not have that currently, so. Um, so no, nothing, uh, big there with fire department budgets. Uh, turnout gear needs to be replaced, I'm looking at prices and expiration date, and, and in the discussion of. The rescue vehicle that is on the table, not on this table, but on, in our, part of our discussion. Uh, that, uh, Carrie Smith had reminded us that there are grants available, lots of grants available for, uh, those purchases, so to keep those in mind, so. Um, and then we moved on to talk about the, uh, fire department bylaws, which the. Public Safety did approve. That's exactly how I feel about this. The, no, the, we approved the proposed fire department bylaws. Um, after the meeting on Wednesday, uh, I was informed that.
Can you hear me?
They were not.
Okay, I'm setting.
Sorry.
Okay, no problem.
The bylaws then went to the fire department who meets afterwards, and it was not passed by the required two-thirds vote. Um, also talking, um, with, uh, uh, Administrator Dwayne and myself is, since we approved it, the motion is before us. But I will ask us not to entertain that, but to defer the matter back to public safety, uh, since all the parties involved are not quite, uh. Ready with the bylaws, so if there's no objection, I will not entertain that motion.
So you're withdrawing your motion?
I'm withdrawing the motion for further discussion. Um. With that, that is all that I have for public safety.
Any questions, comments for Chairman McGregor for public safety?
The next meeting we have is Tuesday, September twenty-sixth at five P M.
Okay.
Thanks.
Uh, F H R.
F H R, Max, September seventh, here at Marshall Bueller Center. Um. Uh, Diane brought up some really good points, um, one is our computer system, Doris is no longer backing up Wood County is. We also have, um, a Microsoft. License agreement that's coming up, so just things that we've got to look for in the budget. Also, you know, Diane also brought up some good ideas here too, you, you know, Dwayne's doing an excellent job, but Diane's here Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And she's fielding a lot of the calls and, um, working hard on the budget along with Dwayne when he gets here towards the end of the week. So we need to keep her really, especially with this process of the budget, involved, and, uh, maybe hopefully next meeting, we can give her numbers to plug into. The budget and see where we have to cut and where we can spend. Um, of course, we don't have final numbers, but I think that's, um. This is only my second year, and Diane's been doing budget work for years, so I, I really appreciate that, and we need to keep her in the loop. Um. So, yeah, and I noticed that there's a lot of, you know, projects and increases, so we'll, we'll work together on that and have to figure that out together. Um, also, we have a, a motion to approve, um, the second street work for two thousand twenty-four to be funded by the TIF funds. Um, this was something that was brought out of Public Works and brought over to, um, the Finance Committee. And the reason we want a motion on this is that the TIF dollars were available, but we. Weren't sure if they were allocated for this project, which is, well, I mean, if you've been to other meetings, it has to be done, that's up there between Verbunker to Monroe. There were sewers, and the wire lines are extremely old, and the, they've had issues every winter and spring with, uh, water main breaks. And it's costing us quite a bit when we have somebody just come in and do bits and pieces for repair. So, um, I propose that motion, I'll make that motion that we use the TIF money for that project for next year, twenty twenty-four.
Made by Radke, second by Zerfle, any discussion or questions?
President, one, uh, I know it's one segment is four hundred thousand, and the other one's five hundred thousand. And where does that boundary of the TIF end? I know it's somewhere going up Second Street.
It can, um, when, uh, Scott Harrington was here, we asked those questions, we can utilize all of Second Street. So that was a really good thing, as far as, I mean, our street projects have been kind of. We used ARPA money last year for alleyways and some TIF money, and we just wanted to make sure a hundred percent that we were doing the right thing. And we could utilize that money for Second Street, otherwise, you know, some of these TIFs are funny, and the village could end up owing money back. So we didn't want to be in that boat, and that's why, uh, Mr. Harrington and Dwayne, they came up with the, it was a good meeting to do that, and make sure that we're spending that money in a wise area. For the public. He can curse, okay, thanks, Dwayne.
Dwayne. Man? Dwayne, so what do we have left in the TIF on you, from your recollection or Diane? After that project and any other projects like Mission Coffee, I don't, what do we have left?
I don't know off the top of my head, Diane would have the numbers closer than I would, but I know we would have substantial amounts still left based on a revenue generation that would be still coming in for the end of two. Is that correct, Diane?
Yeah, right now we have about seven hundred ninety-one thousand, but then, um, we do get to increment in the beginning of the year.
Okay, thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
Well, I did ask you, then you started going on, so I just thought I would end my part.
Got it, thank you. Anybody else? That's dramatic. Okay. Hey, um.
Need a vote.
We need a vote on that. Holy cow, motion made by Radke, second by Zerfle, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, Miss, Madam President.
Okay, second, we have a motion to approve amendment for the extension request for the legacy grant to be used for the bike trail. Uh, work, originally, just to fill you in, if you have questions, I'll make the motion, but originally it was for to go through D M I property. Public Works Director, along with, uh, Dwayne and, um, other people. Came up with another route, and some of the repairs that we need in, uh, the bike trail is present condition. And they contacted Legacy, and they were fine with the amendment, so this is just to have the board. Uh, approve the amendment, and what I would do is we resurfaced from Brunner Avenue to Verbunker Avenue. Paint lines going up Verbunker Avenue, which is a highly, um, used. Street for bunker, especially with the kids by Ripple Creek Park for, uh, all sorts of stuff, uh, Music Fest and whatnot, baseball, Dog Park. And then also, um, the extension from going to Verbunker to Highway seventy-three, which was mentioned in the past. And we can use them once for that project.
Okay, so you're making the motion?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Radke, make a second.
Second.
Second by Grandin, any other discussion, questions for Chairman Radke?
Yes, this is, I'm sorry, this is Dwayne.
Yes.
Um, I was not aware that, I mean, I've heard about it, but I didn't realize that was being actually taken away from the D M I, uh, pro- uh, process. And that's where the amendment has been recommended by, by the Public Works Committee, is that correct?
We're, we're recommending it, it was, originally Boz had this bike trail and the leg- legacy grant. When he rode it, had the bike trail going from all the way through Port Edwards on the existing bike trail. By the fire department, down the alleyway to Edwards Avenue, down Edwards Avenue, which is painted with bikes, uh, on the one side. Then it kind of ends at the D M I. Slash Wood County property, now that Wood County has taken over the buildings, so it just kind of dies there at the statue.
Which is going to be moved.
Which has other plans, but then it was going to take a, um.
He doesn't belong at the dance.
It was going to take a, a north turn through a D M I property, but then D M I, you know, the condition of that property. I don't know if that was such a good idea to have small kids and families bike their. I don't know if that was such a good idea to have small kids and families bike their family through a destruction zone. And or construction zone or demolish zone. And then it was gonna go down the old highway road to um the existing bike trail. And we were gonna go to the existing bike trail now through seventy-three because we thought for one, um the old highway road, there's. There are still some traffic and people seem to want to beat the train and go through the old mill yard. And so that's kind of a dangerous situation also.
The only reason I bring it up, Lon, is last uh week I had a conference call with Scott and DMI for the first time. Um they had mentioned in and DMI had mentioned they were working with Boz on that legacy grant for a trail. Um at this and then the same time, they were trying to update Scott and I and what they're trying to do it for actual in their minds. When they clean up the site. And and the only reason I bring this up is we were, Scott and I were trying to, after we had the meeting, we tried to pull together and see what their. Actual intention was because it's the first time both Scott and I knew about it. And I understand from DMI representatives, they were talking to Boz about several of these potential projects. And all I'm saying is I think it, I don't want to stop what your plans are, but I think it's important that maybe you don't move forward on this one until I get a little more data on. But they had plenty using that trail through through the actual re actually going back and re re uh refurbishing the property. So that it apparently those was discussions with Boz. Great, which I was not aware of, even the board was aware.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Dwayne, I guess my feeling on that is DMI hasn't really showed any extensive, other than uh letting some property go back to the county for taxes. Um other initiatives that I've seen, maybe I'm not aware of, but I I would like to see this uh. For one, I think we have to use the money in a timely period from legacy grant, so we can do uh portions of this. And if DMI all of a sudden starts bringing some end loaders and trucks and starts cleaning up their property. I'd be more than willing to entertain maybe a a change in this, but until then, I haven't seen anything for quite a few years. And I'm guess uh talk is cheap and action is actually something that needs to be done.
Well, Lon, I can understand you that because all I've heard since I've been there is talk and no action. So I could not stay in your position, I just wanted to be aware that the first time I heard something about it. And second, we heard also that, you know, you don't know for sure, but we heard that they did not want to lose their property from the county, but anyway.
Okay.
But some different further discussion, so.
Yeah, and definitely would entertain that, I guess, i- in the future and but we just want to get some of this money that's uh allocated. Because it does have to be spent in a timely fashion.
I understand that, sorry, interrupted.
Oh, no worries.
I a hundred percent agree with with Lon, um that site's been looking like that for over fifteen years. Um you know, before it was always about the the lawsuit, the lawsuit, the lawsuit, lawsuits been done for a couple of years now, nothing's moved. So I will not be in favor of spending one dollar, especially three legacy money or of a grant of any sort on that site. Period, until it is cleaned up and ready to rock. So I I think you're right, we have a, we have a deadline on the legacy grant. They're not gonna hold it open forever for us, so by putting it back and we already have the approval from Mike and those guys over at Legacy. Not even think about it, but my two cents.
Anybody else on that?
I just have one other thing for you, Dwayne, I g- I mean, if you're in contact with DMI, they're more than welcome to come to any of our meetings. We'd we'd actually appreciate it if they came to our meetings to um. But uh if you do have further contact, please let them know that our meetings are publicized and um we would welcome them for any type of input.
I understand your condition on the area, I was there earlier, I just happened to have a meeting the first time, so I heard a lot of talk.
Okay, thanks, Dwayne.
Okay, so that's the motion, motion made by Reiki, second by Grundin, all in favor of the amendment and extension request. For the legacy grant to be used. Anybody opposed? That one carries.
Other than that, uh we don't have anything else for the Finance Committee this month, anybody else have any other questions for me? Uh I've told her fifth at four P M. At Marshall Bueller Center here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh Nepco Lake District update, Eric Hummel is kayaking through some beautiful. Country other than ours and going on a wine tour, so he is not here to update us on the Nepco Lake District. I will um update a little bit, they the Nepco Lake District had their month, um their first annual meeting about a month ago. There's actually quite a few attendance there, um and they set a budget, so they are moving forward with. Um that the weed eating machines have stopped for the year, um and they are gonna try to hire um their own employees for next year. For that, Joe, did I miss anything?
I'm wrong.
Okay, any questions on the Lake District that I may or may not be able to answer? Okay. Unfinished business from previous meeting, anybody have anything for that? New business? Okay, report from the Village Administrator, Dwayne, take it away.
Yes, um pressing on there is a certified survey for Saratoga. Um I think um they'll put on and looking for a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Grundin. Second. I'll second it. Okay, uh motion and second, any questions or discussions on that?
Who's the uh map for?
Weber, one of Saratoga Weber parcel.
So is it actually a parcel that's in Saratoga?
Yes, it's in there, it's a territory area, so it's actually in Saratoga. And we're just actually, they come through us for extraterritorial certification, that's why it's in front of us.
Oh, okay, I understand.
Anything else? Okay, motion by Grundin, second by Mansell, all in favor? Any opposed? That one carries, okay, so number uh number B, letter B.
Um that was in your last speech before the agenda went out and the fire department personnel were interested in. Having Jesse Planner to do grant search for the firefighters, turnout gear and a rescue truck. Um they have provided, not the fire department, I think their association have, I I think a certain amount to Diane. Were actually uh considering having this person come on board for that process. And the reason um they're looking at, the reason we're considering it in our our name is because it would have to come out of our, our legacy name. Or instead of through a disturbance association. Uh my next question though is I, is Drew, is Scott Drew, Drew there, Police Chief?
Yes.
Okay, Scott, I did send you emails and I was wondering if um this had come on by far with the leave program. Have also had that kind of uh consideration for grant searches or do we need a private person to do this?
Yes, Lexi Paul does offer that service, uh it is a paid service. But I'm not exactly sure on what the costs are, but it, there is a grant finding and grant writing service through Lexi Paul.
Did you hear that, Dwayne?
Yes, I heard that and and what I understand from what the fire department looking at, I think they said the, their cost for this one, I think only two hundred fifty dollars. Is that correct, Diane, after it came in Friday?
Yeah.
So that's why it's on the agenda, their their fire department had contact that had information from this planner, I mean, from Jesse Planner. And I just, I just want to Lexi Paul to have, but also that I think we remember that, but I don't know their costs, so. Um it's up to you at this point, don't have the information to give you any good idea, so this is the only one in front of you. That's why I would be in consideration, I didn't, I didn't see a motion, so I wanted the consideration in front of you first.
Okay, so just from my understanding, um Jessica Planner met with the fire department back in March. It kind of went over, so this is just for grant searching out for them, not writing them, correct?
That's what I understand, searching out for them, they won't be writing the grant, just doing a search, say, yeah, they're out there or no, they're not out there.
Who's gonna do the writing?
Once there's capability of wanting to be out there, I might get any answer from the firefighters who'd be doing it ready, but I I I don't know. And um that's another process I've got somewhere with a grant ready. Apparently in, I was told thirteen years ago, they got a grant for a uh turnout gear. And I know from work, the turnout gear only lasts so long and then has to be replaced. And I'm pretty sure they're at that year, twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, that turnout gear needs to be replaced according to life of the rules. That for the public, excuse me, for safety of the firefighters, so that's a main issue that needs to be addressed is the turnout gear.
Do you have any others?
So did you say that the village is paying the two hundred and fifty?
No, right now the firefighter that they have association, they gave the hot funds to the village. The village would actually just um take the funds and then then cut the checks underneath our name because the association doesn't have authority to actually. Hire someone that basically the the village has to be the actual hiring person. A party, I mean.
Anything else for Liberty?
That's fine with me, yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, I think when she met with us, she can write the grant and then she gets paid by collecting a percentage from that grant.
I think to win.
Okay, so we need a motion?
We need a motion then, Dwayne?
Yes, you need a motion because they provide the fire or uh excuse me, associate the fire to fund, uh provide the funds. But the village, we need the actual for hiring of individual, I need a motion to uh to to move forward and.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Gregor will make the motion.
Make most authorized uh village administrator to contract Jessica Planner for grant search for firefighters. Turnout gear and rescue truck for full cost.
Second, second by more, any other discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor? Anybody opposed? That one carries, anything else, Dwayne?
That's all I have right now, um for the meeting.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, report from clerk treasurer. Well, trustee comments.
Um I guess just, uh you know, I've heard from a couple people about the reassessment that uh.
Scott Stewart calling race head?
Yeah, I just heard from him at the meeting here and I still, I heard him yelling from this afternoon. Yeah, so I guess, you know, until the numbers play out, we won't know, but I guess it's something to keep uh keep in mind.
All right, last month, trustee Sailor provided trustee comments that are concerning. Making statements that are not truthful or lack appropriate context is a misrepresentation of the village board's work and responsibility. Few of our fire department leaders are struggling with the changes required by the board, state statutes and best practice policies. This struggle is shared by the volunteer fire departments across the country and has been the topic of training and strategic planning. There are laws that have been enacted in recent years that have created a burden on fire departments across the country. They are intended to keep our village residents and firefighters as safe as possible. We, as village trustees, will continue to establish policies that will create the highest level of safety services. Possible while reducing risk and liability. If we ignore the challenges as presented, we are willfully participating and being neglectful to the citizens of the village. For context, a couple of the policy issues, alcohol in the fire department. This was a village policy in the employee handbook that has not been followed. Simply put, alcohol in the fire department creates the risk of legal and financial liability. After consulting with legal counsel, that has been corrected. Facial hair on firefighters, as reported by our chief, up to seven of our sixteen firefighters. Have facial hair that prohibits them from participating in all aspects of firefighting and rescue options. That is forty-three point seventy-five percent of our department that is required to stay a safe distance away. From fighting the fire, not rescuing people. They can only provide support from outside of the dangerous perimeter on the scene. There is ongoing policy discussion regarding compliance with S C B A standards. The goal is that the firefighters must be equipped with S C B A equipment. This would increase the capacity to fight fire and rescue people as quickly as possible. We will continue to advocate for the village fire department. We need the few firefighters who are resistant to support policies that will increase the safety of our village. And that's it, thank you, guys.
Anybody else? Committee meeting calendar, we kind of did it as we went along, but I will just um do this again. Public Works, September twentieth at four o'clock, tell me if I missed something up to you guys. Parks and Rec, September twenty-seventh at five o'clock. Pitt, October third at five o'clock, Public Safety, September twenty-sixth at five o'clock. F H R, October fifth at four o'clock, the board meeting, oh gosh, the tenth. The tenth at seven o'clock.
Sorry, I I didn't mention, uh P F C ten-two at five o'clock.
Okay, if nothing else, then I will.
I have a comment, please, I forgot to mention.
Yeah, go ahead, Dwayne.
Yes, I want to confer with Lon, he gives report about the budget. Um it's very important that you can keep Diane in the loop because I know that she's putting most together and then I'm reviewing with her, so. I hope that you all would kind of work with Diane, get the information to her as soon as possible. Because we're using the process that her and I went through last time I was here, so she's gonna be a key role of getting it pulled together. So I appreciate working with Diane and I confer with Lon, thank you.
Would it be easiest, and Diane jump in here, would it be easiest for department heads to send all of their stuff to Diane right away? Or how would, how do you want it done?
When they have their number, when they have their numbers, okay, okay.
That would be after that.
Well, you know, she can take a look at, they're gonna have to probably be, depending on the revenue that we get in, there's probably either gonna be cuts or are we gonna, you know. Afford it or not afford it, so.
Okay, okay, we will, it is noted, and I was gonna email it tomorrow just to remind everybody. Okay, then I will adjourn meeting at eight nineteen P M. Thanks, Dwayne. Thank you.